Seventeenth at 6:01 PM. You will begin tonight's council meeting with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer is absent, also Mayor DeVere is absent.
Thank you. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda is the Community Invocation. It will be led this evening by Larry Witterd with the Ten Mile Christian Church. Thank you, Larry, for joining us today.
Tonight, our dear Heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for all the blessings we enjoy in Meridian. I especially thank you for all of our city leaders who are working diligently to manage the amazing growth of this city. I cannot imagine what our city will be like in a few short years, and now we are told today that we're standing at 106,000 people. It requires the best of our mayor and this council to control this growth. To date, they have done a good job, and your blessings on their thinking and health have been a key factor. Tonight, we can tick off a whole series of decisions that this council will face in the next few months. More subdivisions, affordable homes for young couples and the elderly, more commercial developments, new schools, expanded faith facilities, highway improvements, controlling crime, especially the opioid epidemic, and protecting our city from fire, starting with good building codes. Tonight, we also pray for our young men and women who are in harm's way around the world. Protect them and bring them home safely to the families. I pray for our state as we take the first step in electing new statewide leaders in mid-May. May the best candidates prevail. I will be honest that this election cycle has generated more negative mail and advertisement than is normal in our state. Please forgive us. Lastly, I want to pray for our nation. With the killing of hundreds of civilians by gas in Syria and a world that has been uprooted by war in the Middle East, give our leaders wisdom as they try to protect our nation. May we always look to you as our ultimate guide in all that we do. Again, I thank you for this council, and may their decisions tonight be sound and productive. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Thank you, Larry. Blessings to you. Thank you for sharing that this evening. Item number four on the agenda is adoption. The agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve the agenda as published.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, Mr. Clerk, any signups?
There were no signups, Mr. President.
No signups. Item number six, our consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve the consent agenda. With the, yeah, move we, Mr. President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as published. There's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
There are no items moved from the consent agenda. That brings us to item number eight, our community presentation, our community sponsor recognition. Renee White's going to come and share with us that and the special events update. Welcome, Renee.
Thank you.
Hi, Renee.
Hey. Thanks for the time.
You bet.
I, um, the way the sponsorship contracts have been in the past, you guys have looked at each and every one of them, and with some changes in the processes, you asked me to come and give a report every couple of times a year to talk about the sponsors, and so we've got some fun things coming up, so you'll have to forgive me if I take just a, just a skosh of your time to talk about some of the things I'm most excited about, but we will, um, have, uh, talk about all the sponsors, too. So, um, we're going to look back to Christmas. Unplug and Be Outside is the, um, is coming up. It's our very first event of the spring, and then the Cable One Movie Night in Meridian. So, Christmas, I know it's hard to look back, to think about that, as we're ready for spring, but I do want to thank our presenting sponsor for the parade, Borton Lakey Law and Policy. We had over 50 floats this year, and I think that one of the biggest turnouts that we've, that we've ever had. Our grand marshal was Dan Clark, who, of course, is from the Idaho Food Bank. His float, Horse-Drawn Carriage, actually was sponsored by Les Schwab. Our stage was sponsored by Idaho Independent Banks, and they've got both corners going on there. Um, we're very thankful for them and everything that they do. And then, of course, 94.9 The River, which is a script station, um, all of their stations sponsored the parade and all of the Christmas activities, but we had Ken Bass and Deb Corson come and be our parade emcees. So, that was, um, that was a lot of fun. And then, of course, Santa. So, we have a variety of different sponsors that sponsor Santa's float, which is the, of course, the most popular float, so, um, thanks to Advanced Heating and Cooling, Meridian Automotive, Science, et cetera, R.C. Willie, and the Electrical Engineering Company, E2CO. So, the night culminates in fireworks, and those are presented by Mountain America Credit Union, and, man, look at all those people. Isn't that great? This is just like a snippet of what, what was there. Okay, so, um, the last event that we had a sponsor for, for Christmas in Meridian was All American Insurance, and they are the sole sponsor for the Children's Winterland Festival, um, which is held over at the Boys and Girls Club and has, um, activities and things for the kids. So, that's one of the events that we are hoping to continue to grow next year. So, we obviously have a ton of other people that are involved, including vendors who bring in hot chocolate stands, and then, of course, all of our, um, volunteers, and so we'd like to thank all of them as well. All right, so, spring, yeah! We're so excited for it. So, this is one of my favorite events, Unplug and Be Outside Week, because it is so interactive and gets people to, encourages them to put down their telephones, get away from their electrical devices, their computers, and get engaged. It gives you the opportunity to do something new that is free, um, take down as many barriers as you can and just, and just go do it. So, um, we've moved it to May 5th through the 12th in hopes of capturing a little bit of sunshine. Last year, it was a little windy, a little cold, and so some of them had to, we had to unplug and move inside, which, you know, that's okay, too, but, um, um, so, we've got a week's worth of activities, and they are in three different areas, sports, arts, and recreation, and we have things for all ages. And those include, um, let's see, so if you want to try your hand at golf, if you want to go tour a, we've, I've found a couple gardens that are giving us free admission, including our very own, uh, Community Garden is going to do a tour and talk about how to be a part of the co-op. We've got sports for kids, lacrosse, soccer, um, flag football, um, so, really, things of all ages, including if you wanted to learn some line dancing. Who knows how to line dance? Good, that I, I think you guys are all coming, right? Right? So, we're going to kick it off on Saturday, May 5th. One of the things I'm super excited about is we are partnering with the Republic Services. They're going to bring a five-gallon tank of tire slime, and they will be fixing flat tires for free and putting slime in it, so, um, bring your kids bikes, bring your own bikes, we'll keep you rolling all summer long. St. Luke's is going to come, and they're going to do some helmet fitting, um, and if you don't have a helmet that fits, they're giving it away. We don't like to call it a helmet giveaway, because it's really, uh, if you don't have one that fits, or if you don't have one, then they, then they offer one. The Summer One Skippers are one of my very favorites. Have you seen them? They are amazing, and so, they'll do a demonstration, and then they're going to get the kids in the audience, give them a quick lesson, and we're going to send them home with jump ropes so that they can keep moving, um, all summer long, so. And then, this is another new one that I'm really excited about, the Boise State Athletics is coming, so we'll have members of the football team, volleyball team, and soccer team coming and doing 45-minute clinics with kids, just, you know, some kicking drills, some football things, so, um, those are all, yes, see? I love it, the head shakes, thanks. It's going to be a great day. So, there are over 40 different classes that are available. You can jump online, and with our new online system, you can put them right to your calendar, you can put them on your Facebook. They're super easy, there's different ways to look at it, and there's different ways to sort, too. So, you can sort, let's say you're an adult and you want recreation, that's going to bring up anything that's suitable for you, or if you're looking for sports for your kids. So, that is online, and also new this year, Mayor Tammy is working with us to do a challenge. So, um, we'll have a bingo card available, and if you stay offline, keep your phone, your computers, your television, your computer for five days, you can get entered for a prize. Or if you attend different classes and you get a bingo, you can submit that, and the, the biggest prize that we have is season passes for Roaring Springs. We've got a pair for those. We also have passes to Birds of Prey. The Idaho River Sports is giving us sup, stand-up paddling passes, so you can go and rent those for a couple hours. Idaho Botanical Garden has given us event passes, so if you've ever gone to Bug Day, Great Garden Escape, um, any of those. So, um, that, that's kind of fun and exciting, and that's something that we're going to do to just encourage kids to take, you know, one more class, or giving them a little bit of incentive to, to stay offline. All of this, Unplug and Be Outside is sponsored by a grant from Be Outside Idaho, which is an Idaho State Parks program, so we're really happy to partner with them. All right, moving on. Everyone's favorite. Okay, my favorite is Unplug, but this is everyone else's favorite. No, I love Movie Night, it's such a, such a great night. So, we have our returning sponsor, our Title I sponsor, or our title sponsor for the 12th year in a row is Cable One. And then, our returning season sponsors are St. Alphonsus, Mountain America Credit Union, and VCI Audio Entertainment. This year, we have 14 different, um, 14 nights, so it runs June 1st through August 31st. You'll see that this is only 13 sponsors logos, and that's because Idaho Central Credit Union is doing two nights. So, I'm going to tease you just a little bit, and I'm not going to tell you what the movies are. I know everyone asks, what's coming? What's the movies? Well, but I am going to tell you how to find them. So, if you get online, and there, I have incentive for you to do this, in that if you get online to facebook.com/movienightinmeridian, you can see, this is a sample of what it looks like, and you can click on Interested, and what it does is it helps me promote, helps you promote, helps the city promote, because it's going to show up on your Facebook, and it's going to, um, Facebook looks at it and says, oh, there are people interested, so then it shows up in more feeds, and it creates that energy. So, um, if you haven't seen the facebook.com backslash movie night in Meridian Facebook page, that's where you can find that. If you would like to look to the city page, it's meridiancity.org backslash movie night, they are all there. We do kick off on June 1st with the library. I know I've all lost you to your devices, I know it's my fault. No, I totally appreciate it. I totally appreciate it. The Meridian Library District is kicking off their reading program, their summer reading program. So, that's all I've got. I told you I'd be quick. Few more dates, just to put on your calendar, to be thinking about the Hillsdale Park Grand Opening. If you like the Beach Boys, we have a regional band called the Southwest Surfers that's coming, so they're going to be a blast. I'm, like, seriously, really, a lot of fun. It's the Friday night before Memorial Day, come on out. Gene Kleiner Day, of course, is Meridian Symphony Orchestra with their pops. It's a lovely, lovely night. Anyway, other things to put on your calendar, and that's all I've got. Questions?
Thank you, Renee.
My pleasure. Thanks for the time.
For the info and report, council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Not a question, just two comments. One, love your enthusiasm for this. You just, you are such a great ambassador of our Parks Department, all of our great events, and thank you for bringing these to us. I know that we all hopped on our phones to be interested in the event, but if not, then I probably would have forgot, so my apologies. Secondarily, I just wanted to commend you on the memo that you gave all of council before you came before us tonight. Really, really appreciative, and it's very, very helpful, and I know that a lot of our directors watch the city council meeting either live or on replay, and so I would encourage all of them to connect with you to find out how to best prepare before you get in front of city council with a memo.
I cheated off of somebody else's, but...
Right.
I just formatted after Colin, so, yeah. Happy, happy to share it, I appreciate the kudos, but really, I want to just thank the sponsors who, like, these programs are supported by them, they wouldn't happen without them, so...
Couldn't agree more.
Really, yeah.
Great partnerships.
Awesome.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. No other community items or presentations on the agenda moves us to the action items. Number 9A, public hearing for H. 2018-0012, Obergeberg subdivision by Devco. This one's going to get continued, but we'll open in the public hearing, and Sonya can share an explanation of what's going on.
Yes, um, council, the Obergeberg subdivision applicant, we, we had originally scheduled them for the next hearing, and then we, on the 24th, and then we moved them up, but our database system failed to automatically notify them of the change in the date, and staff failed to follow up with them personally, so, that is the reason. They did not post the site appropriately before the meeting, so we cannot hear them tonight, but they are going to be, they're ready and, ready to be on the 24th, so.
Okay, but the nonposting was our fault, basically, more so than theirs?
More or less. Yes.
Okay. Council, any questions? If not, is there a motion to continue this public hearing to April 24th, 2018?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I'm reading. Mr. President, I move that we continue item 9A to April 24th, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue item 9A to April 24th, 2018. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Item 8B, public hearing for Bariah Apartments, H. 2018-0003 by Schultz Development. We'll begin this, it's conditional use permit and preliminary plat, begin this public hearing with staff comment. Josh?
Good. So, as you said, this is the application for, it's called Bariah Subdivision. If you look at the vicinity map here, obviously, the entire parcel of, uh, the apartments, the entire parcel, so I've kind of highlighted the area in which the apartments would be located, just for information's sake. So, as you said, this is for a conditional use permit and for a preliminary plat. The site consists of approximately 12.59 acres of land, which is, excuse me, currently zoned R-40, located near the southwest corner of West Franklin Road and North Ten Mile Road. This property was annexed and granted preliminary plat back in 2006 as a Bariah subdivision. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is high-density residential. So, the, firstly, a conditional use permit is requested for a multifamily development in the existing R-40 zoning district. The proposed multifamily development consists of 240 dwelling units and 13 structures on the approximately 12.59 acres of land in the R-40 zoning district. The units consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Access, and again, I do this every time, north would be to the left, just to fit the plat on the page. So, the access is off of Franklin Road, this is the one access to Franklin. The applicant is restricted to a 200-unit cap until there's another access point per fire code. So, that's the access point, it's, uh, North Umbria Hills Avenue. Parking for the development consists of, so as I said, there's one, two, and three-bedroom units, so with a requirement, um, it'd be 456 parking spaces, the applicant is exactly require, exactly conforming to the requirement, with approximately 1.9 parking stalls per unit. Since development is located adjacent to a proposed collector and arterial roads, we should not allow for on-street parking, the applicant has provided, uh, apologize, provided a few additional parking spaces to comply with the standard. So, in 2011, construction of a collector roadway was approved on the south side of the project, so I'll move back here. This is, there was an overall planned development for this, for this area, and there's some existing approvals for a collector street on the south side of the project, and so the applicant is required to stub a driveway to the south in order to take access from that future collector, which will then, um, I believe the applicant's indicated that they will have a secondary access prior to that happening, so the 200-unit cap should not be an issue for the development, but in the off-chance that, uh, that does become an issue, they'll be required to stub to a proposed collector as soon as the property to the south is developed. So, going back to the site, parking lot landscaping is required to be provided in accord with the UDC. On the south side of the project, there is an existing commercial zoning that requires a 25-foot landscape buffer to be installed. On the north side of the project, along West Franklin, the applicant is required to install a 25-foot landscape buffer. Additionally, a 20-foot landscape buffer is required along North Umbria Hills Avenue, which is the, uh, the road runs north and south on your page, east, left to right. And this is the, this is the overall subdivision plat showing the, showing the existing or proposed buildings, proposed buildings, I should say, in the clubhouse and the amenities. This is the plat indicating that, uh, the applicant is proposing to subdivide this into 13 residential building lots and three common lots, and as I said, about 12.59 acres of land. Access, again, is to Franklin Road, will be modified in the future as soon as adjacent properties are developed. A minimum of 10% or 1.25 acres of open space is required. The applicant is providing 2.97 acres, approximately 24% open space. That will consist of, amenities consist of a clubhouse, a swimming pool, a tot lot, a landscape buffer, half the arterial landscape buffer, and miscellaneous open grassy areas that are a minimum of 20 by 20, which is, which is required by the UDC for multifamily developments. The Kennedy lateral runs along a portion of the west boundary of the property. The applicant shall coordinate with the appropriate irrigation district to ensure that no structures occur encroach into their prescribed easement. The commission did recommend approval. Summary of that is the applicant's representative, Matt Schultz, in favor. There was none in opposition, did not receive any comment at the public hearing, did not receive any written testimony. I was the staff presenting the application. There were no other staff members commenting, there were no issues of, key issues of public testimony. Key issues of discussion by the commission were the number of parking spaces and the number and location of trash enclosures. They did not make any changes to staff's recommendation, nor were there any outstanding issues for council. Have not received any written testimony since the commission hearing. Just by way of, for the explanation, this is the, kind of a, a mock-up of the development with the proposed landscaping, and then these are the proposed conceptual elevations for the project. With that, there is a requirement that these meet the design standards, and the applicant will also have to come forward with the certificate of zoning compliance and receive that approval prior to receiving any, any building permits. So, with that, stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. Council, any questions of staff at this point? Oh, Mr. Burton.
So, just one question, has the access issue been addressed in the DA? You know, as far as, you know, having that 200-unit cap?
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz.
Good evening, council. Matt Schultz, 8421 South Ten Mile in Meridian, here on behalf of the Bariah subdivision. Been working on this a long time, probably back before I was even turning gray, but it's been like 12 years since this, we originally put a Bariah through, uh, the system. At the time, um, you know, the economy was booming, '05, '06. We, we did kind of put a break on it for several months to join with the, uh, Ten Mile interchange, specific area plan process, where South Ridge got designed, we got designed, and, and some other areas around the interchange got designed, and there's a reason why we meet the comp plan, because we were part of that comp plan exercise, and everything that we're doing was decided upon back then. It's taken this long to go through the downturn. We've started some single-family residential a couple of years ago on Phase 1, we're under construction on Phase 2, the single-family that's west of us. We're building half of that collector road with the phase under construction right now. These apartments will extend the other half. We're, we're doing our part for the regional infrastructure, if you will, uh, for the collector system out there with this subdivision that was designed back with everybody in mind. So, that collector road we're doing not only benefits us, but benefits our landowner to the south, who asked me when that was going to be done, because I know he's interested in getting a secondary access. And it'll all connect to Ten Mile, and it'll all connect over to Black Cat, and it'll connect up to Franklin. In the end, we're the first ones in, south of Franklin, providing annexation routes for people, we're providing utilities for people, other neighbors, we're providing access for neighbors, too, but it's, uh, it's all master planned, this is the way you want to do it. You want, this is the way you want to do R-40, um, you know, you don't want to have neighbors showing up, 300 neighbors showing up because they're mad because they didn't know about it, or, this is all well planned out, I don't have any neighbors showing up. Nobody has shown up, and I think the only people that signed up at the last meeting, they were confused, because they wanted to sign up for Costco, and I was up first. And so, a bunch of people signed up and didn't want to testify, because they weren't really meaning to, um, because I just haven't had anybody even really care about this, because we're in that new area, it's all been master planned for several years. So, what we've done is, is, 12 years ago, we kind of set aside an area, we didn't know exactly how it was going to lay out, but we thought it'd be big enough and appropriately sized for some apartments. We're coming back through with the, the preliminary plat, so we, we're definitely have our CCNRs reviewed by the city attorney, like we talked about in another multifamily one a while ago. We'll, we'll do that, and then, uh, the parking on this, there's not a lot of extra parking, but we have a lot of extra open space, or 24% open space, and the G-metrics on this kind of work out such that, um, such that, we have a lot of open space, 24%, um, and, and we have a lot, you know, the trash enclosures and all those things we need. We've since, since this was done, this has been punched through for an emergency access to a collector road that's going to be coming from Ten Mile this way, uh, if you can see that little mouse cursor on your screen. So, we've moved that trash enclosure over to here, and that was a discussion that was had by the planning commission, is, hey, there's a trash enclosure missing. I'm like, no, I think it's just covered up, and I got back home that night, it's like, hey, he's right, we need to put a trash enclosure over there. So, those revisions have been made to the site plan, uh, of punching that through, and even though it wasn't shown on the one that came up on your screen, we have submitted that back to the city. So, I, I think we've got a good plan. Franklin Road's even done in front of us, it's five lanes, it's beautiful. It's done before you even get there, there's going to be a signal there, you know, the work is driven into, I mean, things just don't usually happen like this, but if you wait long enough, uh, not that we intentionally waited long enough, but the, the market has matured enough to, to be there. So, I should probably just shut up, but I'm going to tell you a little bit of anecdotal testimony about apartments and cost in Seattle. I've got a cousin who's a mechanical engineer, and she just moved up there with her husband and decided to try the downtown Seattle thing. So, they have a 660-square-foot apartment that they pay, I think she said 2,700 a month, and, or 2,400 a month, and, and the parking stall is extra, $150 a month if you want a parking stall, and they have one car. And the two-bedroom is 900 square foot, and that's all they have, they don't go above that, and they're at like 3,400. And they have mass transit, they're 10 minutes from downtown, and all that, so we're not even getting close to that, but it's, you know, that, that's just kind of, that's what the comparison is, and we're, you know, these will be in the low thousand, you know, oh, you know, maybe 1,200 a month, 1,100 a month for the bigger ones, but still, it's just, it's crazy. When she told me that, I was shocked, I hadn't talked to her in a long time to know what she was up to, but we just ran into each other, and it's crazy what's going on, but, but this would be a good spot for mass transit if it ever comes. We are close to Ten Mile Interchange. Put density where your services are, and that's what we're doing, and, but even so, we're at the low end of multifamily density. Staff even said you need a minimum density, I believe, of 17 or something, or 16, per acre, minimum, in this area, and we're, what are we, at 19? So, we're, I mean, you put your density where your services are, and this is our attempt to do that. This clubhouse is twice as big as the last one you saw in that other one, it's, you know, 5,000 square feet, it's bigger, because there's more units on this one, and there's twice as many parking stalls and all that, but it's got a beautiful landscape boulevard coming in, and, um, I think it's a good plan. So, with that, I'll just sit down and hopefully, uh, you'll look for it. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Thanks.
Matt, one question. Is the structure on Franklin Road, is that, are they all three stories, or is that two?
Yeah, good question. Councilman Borton. There's a site plan that shows the one, the two and three stories, and that's two over there. I think it's two along our collector boulevard, and it's three kind of in the middle. And so, you know, you would do more, but we are parking constrained. I mean, you would go taller, more places if you could, but we're parking constrained. And so you just kind of get them in there, and that's what you get, so.
So along Umbra Hills, those are two?
I believe those are two, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
Talk to me about visitor parking. You're right at like the minimum.
We're five over. We're five over, we're five over your code.
Okay, we're five over.
We're five over your code.
Okay.
But there is 11 spaces for the clubhouse. We have all the other stuff, and your code says, as you know, one and a half for one bedroom.
I get it.
Two, two.
I get it, I get it. I'm not saying you're not meeting, you know, but what I'm asking is like, you know, if there's a, you know, if there's someone on the north end that's visiting someone and, you know, but where are they going to park if?
This will not be full for a long time. There's always going to be extras. People are going to be moving, moving in, moving out. Full is considered 95%.
Right.
Not everybody's going to have two cars, some people may not have one. So I think you had a good code. If you're going to look at revising it, I would add, myself, I would add one, obviously, to the three, the three-bedroom. And what it's going to do, you're not going to get more parking, you're going to get less three-bedroom apartments. But that's okay. You know, I think that's all right, really, because in my opinion, that's still good mixed. If you want a three-bedroom, probably should look at a house, I don't know. But I think that's what's going to end up happening. If you do that, to my point about the Seattle market, they didn't have any three-bedrooms. You know, they just didn't. And so it's one of those things that there's a lot of housing options in the valley. And the parking is going to have to be enforced by the management company. Now, where they are, like if you get a one-bedroom, you get one. If you got two, you got two. And somehow they're going to have to enforce that. It's going to be hard, it's going to be difficult, but that's what they're going to have to do. That's what they get paid to do, is enforce that. So as far as a big party coming over, maybe you shouldn't party in the apartment. You should go someplace else if you've got 10 guests. I don't know. You know, it's, but what is the right number, to my point? Is 10 extra good? Is 20 extra good? You know, it's a little arbitrary, so it just needs to be figured into whatever your code says.
Got it.
And I think it does to a point already. It's just, I think you've had maybe an example somewhere where it doesn't work, and there's some places where it does work, so, you know, that's it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Martin.
Matt, thank you for the entertainment.
Yeah.
I love, I love your open space.
Great.
You've met all the minimum requirements for amenities, which are really nice amenities. Just going to throw this out there, and this is not a requirement, but you've got this beautiful open space, like of Umbria. You know, I can really picture a bench, or, you know, you've got a lot of units in there. Well, there's, anyway, there are a lot of places. I'm just saying, like, put a little shelter or a couple of benches where so, encourage people to walk and hang out and enjoy the open space.
I'd love to do that, and we will do that.
As opposed to just having everybody congregate in this one area where all the amenities are. So that would just be my only two cents.
How about we put a gazebo sitting area somewhere off to the side, and that's perfectly a good idea?
Thank you.
You know, we just have, you know, you get focused, and you say, okay, we're going to do this, you're working on the next project, and that's a good little tweak that we could do.
People that have apartments don't have as much space to carry, to have as many chairs as somebody who has a hooker garage, and, you know, a lot of us have our own shelters that we could carry out there, but we're talking about apartments with a lot less space, so.
No, I'd love to. I see a couple of spots that I agree could work, and if you want to add that as a condition, that we put a, you know, 12 by 12 or 15 by 15 gazebo sitting area.
Soccer field.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Hey, I want to do, I do want to point out.
Football stadium.
I do want to point out that this is part of a 93-acre site that was approved, and 14 of that has an elementary school over on Black Cat, that the school district has been kind of, got a free reservation for the last 14 years, and they haven't acted on it yet, they haven't purchased it yet, but it was part of that. They were there during the master plan and go, that looks like a good spot for a school. And that's where it's stuck ever since, over there. There's a, it's a pretty good spot for a school. It just when, we don't know yet, but it's coming. So it is part of the site, and they have a lot of big open space. It's a half-mile away, but it's in the site, so.
Let's go, Matt.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Any signups? No signups? Anyone here in the public wishing to provide testimony on this application?
Anyone?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Seeing nobody in the public is here to testify, I move we close the public hearing on item 9B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on H-2018-0003. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve item 9B, H-2018-0003. Oh, yes, we didn't give the applicant any, I don't think he had anything else to say, but include all staff and applicant testimony.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve H-2018-0003 to include staff and applicant comment. It includes the gazebo language that was referenced at the end. Any discussion?
No discussion. Just this Mylum gazebo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Item eight, or nine, C, public hearing for H-2018-0006, fastedees by ALC Architecture at 3775 North Eagle Road. We begin this application with staff comment. It's an annexation and zoning and CUP. Sonya, take it away.
Thank you, President Barton, Councilman. This site consists of 1.63 acres of land. It's zoned RUT in Ada County and located at 3775 North Eagle Road. This property was previously de-annexed from the city of Boise and included in Meridian's area of city impact boundary. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation, we are floating the mixed-use regional designation on the adjacent property to the south that is under the same ownership. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of 1.63 acres of land with a CG zoning district consistent with the mixed-use regional future land use map. The site plan is proposed as shown, that demonstrates how the annexation area, as well as the overall site, which includes property to the south that is not part of this application, is proposed to develop. The annexation area is proposed to develop with a 16,399-square-foot convenience retail store with a drive-through establishment and a fuel sales facility. An associated car wash and quick lube is planned on the abutting property to the south that is not part of this application but is under the same ownership. A conditional use permit is requested for a drive-through establishment within 300 feet of an existing residence and extended business hours of operation within the CG zoning district for this convenience store and fuel sales facility to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, instead of 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, as required when abutting a residential use or district, unless otherwise approved through a conditional use permit. So that is what the applicant is requesting tonight, is extended hours. The only existing residence is directly to the north here of that property. You can see where my pointer is. The drive-through is proposed along the north side of the retail store depicted on the north end of the property within 300 feet of an existing residence to the north. A ride-in, ride-out access is proposed via an existing driveway from State Highway 55 on Eagle Road and from a driveway that runs along the south boundary of the site via Eagle Road. Both of the accesses via the state highway were approved through a prior variance application. Because this site abuts a state highway and access is limited, staff is recommending a driveway stub is provided to the property to the north along with a pathway connection. Staff also recommends a pedestrian walkway is provided along the southern boundary of the site for connection to the pathway along Eagle Road, which the applicant has agreed Conceptual building elevations were submitted, as shown. A welcome to Meridian Monument sign is proposed at the northeast corner of the site within the buffer along Eagle Road, an entryway corridor into the city. The commission recommended approval of the subject annexation and zoning and conditional use permit. Steve Eddy, the applicant, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from James Doolan, FIG Development LLC, the property owner to the west of this site, and Steve Eddy, the applicant. Key issues, James Doolan, the property owner to the west, stated he's in favor of the proposed development plan with the driveway along the west property line because a landscape buffer and six-foot-tall privacy fence is planned along the east boundary of the future residential property to buffer the commercial uses. And if you'll remember, this property to the west is that multifamily development that was before you guys a while back. And then Steve Eddy, the applicant, is requesting that they be allowed to leave the existing office building on this site for use as a construction office to be demolished before a certificate of occupancy is issued. Staff and the commission were in agreement with this request. He also requested they be allowed to do a property boundary adjustment for two parcels instead of one. Staff is in agreement with that request as well, as is the commission. Third, they not be required to provide a driveway stub and cross-access easement to the property to the north, and that would be right here in this location, as he feels it will negatively impact internal circulation to the development and will be a safety concern to pedestrian access to the site. The UDC, Section 113A3, does require cross-access to adjacent properties to reduce access points to the state highway. Therefore, the staff and commission was not in favor of granting that request. Lastly, he requests a reduction in the landscape buffer along the north property boundary from 25 feet to 12 feet, and this is the buffer to residential uses. He is proposing to provide a berm and a four-foot-tall, fully-screened fence. And counsel approval of a modification to the buffer width is required specifically with this application. Issues of discussion by the commission was the time of day that deliveries occur and the 24-hour operation of the facility, provision of the driveway to the north boundary for future access and interconnectivity. And they were in favor of the requested reduced buffer width to the future residential development to the west with that property owner's consent and support, which was Mr. Doolan's, and the reduced buffer width to the residential property to the north. Commission changes to the staff recommendation, they voted to modify development agreement provision number 1.1.1A to allow the existing office building to remain and be used as a construction office and for it to be demolished prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for the convenience store. And modification to development agreement provision number 1.1.1C to allow a property boundary adjustment application to be processed for two parcels instead of one. And outstanding issues for counsel tonight is, first one is the counsel should determine if extended hours of operation, 24 hours a day, are appropriate for this site. The UDC restricts hours from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM when the property abuts a residential use. It does give counsel the authority to change that. And then lastly, a reduction in the width of the buffer to residential uses is requested from 25 feet to 12 feet along the north boundary of the site, so counsel action is required on that also. No written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions? None at this point. Would the applicant come forward?
I'm Steve Eddy, or counsel, I'm Steve Eddy, 3775 North Eagle Road, which is in Boise, Idaho today, and we hope some Meridian, Idaho tonight.
My name's Zach Eddy, 3775 North Eagle Road.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks. So I think what we wanted to bring up is, I think you saw by the elevations, we're Meridian people, and we're pretty proud to be the new gateway to Meridian sign at this development and show, you know, the people that are coming into Meridian of, you know, what we're about and what retailing we think in the right ways about. And then, I guess, to get off the subject for a minute, I don't know if you guys really want to know, on the, we came here for the Costco hearing, and I'm not sure with fuel and fuel tanks, if you have a concern and would like a short overview of what we're putting in. So we put in double-wall, full-containment tanks, and I think tanks get a bad name in the industry. Tanks really aren't the issue for fuel leaks. It's proven that, you can look at DEQ reports and state reports, improper installation of the lines and the dispensers is 99% of leaks in the fuel industry. And that's usually done by techs or people that don't quite do things right and don't monitor their sites right. So the tanks we propose are full double walls, there's a tank inside a tank. So the inner tank has to leak, there's a monitor inside between the two tanks that will go off if any liquid gets in that area. Then you have an outer tank on top of that. So you never say never, but they're pretty foolproof today on the tank side. And then we take from that, the lines, and basically do the same thing. We run a conduit that's about a four-inch conduit and run the lines inside that to create another double-wall containment space with a sensor at both ends. So there's a sensor at the tank end, there's a sensor at the dispenser end, that if any liquid hits, and basically, you could take a glass, and we test these, is put a glass of water, put the sensor in, the monitors go off, the lights go off, and you know you have a problem. Last year with the weather we had in the valley, we had water not get in the tanks, but get in those spills and in those sumps with the freezing, and that happened, happened to every gas station in this valley. We were tight, never got any water in the fuel, but sensors went off. And that's what they're supposed to do with the contaminant. You know, water was a test, but the contaminant's what we're trying to stop. And that solves most of the issues that we're worried about with the fuel station today. The containment area inside the dispensers also, DEQ just passed, something we've been doing my whole career, is manually opening the dispensers up monthly and looking underneath to see if you have a leak. That's 99% of the leaks is under there, and we manually, he learned how to do this, is take the cover off and give a visual leak. That's now required per DEQ standards to do that monthly, that, because that's where the leaks start, is in that area. And a lot of dispensers out there that have been installed don't have a containment bucket under the dispenser, which is virtually a bathtub, to catch the product before it could go into the ground and contaminate the aquifers. We also do a double-wall fill bucket. I think in the old days, the biggest problem was when the tank was loaded with fuel, they did it, they drained the hose, there was just gravel around the fill bucket. Every time they filled, I don't want to say a gallon, but fuel went down in there. We have a double-wall containment there too, so if they overfill the tank or drain the hose, it goes basically into a funnel-type thing and slowly goes into the tank, not just into the ground. So like I say, you never say never, but we've protected the environment and the ground about as best you can from a fuel contaminant getting in the ground or in the dirt at the I don't know if you have any questions on that part of it?
Counsel, any questions? No?
Interesting.
Okay. And then hours, I think, you know, we've requested 24, mostly just due to the state highway and Eagle Road. I don't think we will be open 24. I mean, we'll have our fuel unattended, but I don't think the store hours. I'm a pretty firm believer from my first career at this that nothing happens good after midnight, and we pretty much will close a facility at midnight. We have looked at possibly keeping the drive-through open later while people are cleaning up, and it's a safe environment where we don't have to worry about our clerks ever having an issue. The drive-through window is close to a residential, but that neighbor and the rest of the neighbors, we've met ongoing through this whole process. The neighbor that we affect to the straight north, he was fine with a 10-foot landscape barrier in the fence. We proposed 12 in the fence. His property is for sale for commercial use. I think that will happen in the near future. But he himself is fine with the 10-foot and with the fence. So we met with him multiple times. The cross-access to the north, I have an issue with that, with this site, and, you know, our other sites are thankfully busy, and we're hoping this one will be busier than some of the others. And with the pedestrian traffic from the neighborhood that now looks like is going in behind, and the apartments, and the drive-through in there, I just felt with the property to the north being developed and Jasmine Lane still being probably and Jasmine Lane still being probably an access point, and then Wainwright being the next access point, I don't believe there'll be another access point granted with how the property to the north currently sits other than what's there today. So I don't know that it's going to help to have them coming through my site versus center point. I would love the traffic, but I am seriously worried about cars leaving the drive-through and the pedestrian pass we're putting in for all the residential, which is the action we seem to have and somebody getting hurt. And that's my only reason for not wanting the cross-access on that northerly boundary. I think that's it, unless you guys have any other questions, or you got anything to add?
No.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Steve, can, recognize you obviously are very familiar with your property, but on that cross-access piece, that's the one that's kind of giving me a little bit of trouble. And I'm looking at it from this one image that's here in front of us. Can you kind of share with us where you see the concerns originating from? And the reason why I ask that is almost to your point that this is, you know, next to a state highway, and I'm trying to figure out where we're going to see this pedestrian traffic that you're really concerned about.
Well, this pedestrian pathway that I'm pointing to now is going to come from the north, and there is a fairly, a large developer now looking at this property behind the piece that abuts me to the north for residential. All of the property to the west is a pretty large apartment complex that's going in today. They will be coming through there mostly because right here, there's a fire lane that, well, it's right here. There's a fire lane with just bollards for the fire to get into that apartment complex in case of emergency. I know that those residents in that apartment complex, they will not go down to the designated spot. The easiest and least resistance is walking through this wide driveway that will be for fire access, and that's how they will come to this facility, the majority. Which if we have a drive-through coming out here, I'm already worried a little bit about that, but if we have, you know, depending upon what happens here, a lot of access driving through here, and these people, they will not follow this sidewalk up to here. They will just come straight through to there when they walk through. And with the drive-through, with the truck delivery that we do have, and with this, I just feel, and our sites are busier than most, with the traffic we generate and what we have going on, I just feel it's unsafe for people. And I don't think there's a worry for you guys that, other than Jasmine, there will not be another access point, I don't believe, north of me until you get to Wainwright where the light is. And if you look at the master plan here where, I gotta see, is this red? Is this red line, Sonya, the center point, the new center point? The dash line? Oh, center point, right down here.
Not necessarily, Steve. They're looking at a different alignment. Excuse me, President Borton.
Oh, that's used to exactly. So right in here, along our other access point, I believe it's right here, that goes to Hobby Lobby, I think this is Hobby Lobby. So right behind Hobby Lobby, center point is extended right now with apartment development to right here. If this housing complex that I hear is going in in here, which I don't think you've seen anything on that yet, they will, I'm sure, have to extend this to this Wainwright access, which is right about here, that takes you right to the light right here. So I think if the development that I'm worried about happens, they will have an access through here to Wainwright. I don't think there'll be another access other than the Jasmine and then to ours.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Mr. Eddy, then, will you not take any access to your facility off of Jasmine?
No. No.
Thank you.
So Steve, that's, if I'm tracking the question, if any of the folks in these to-be-built apartments or anybody to the west wants to access your facility by car, it would have to take quite a roundabout path to get onto Eagle Road to then access? Is that correct?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It's already blocked off. So my westerly line is going to be a fence to protect that neighborhood that that developer's putting in, Mr. Doolin. And then we'll have one or two pedestrian accesses and then that fire access. But they'll be able to come and, this map isn't the best. The road that turns in that goes to Hobby Lobby, right here, this road takes you into the two access points into the apartment complex. So you'll be able to come right back on this road and then come in, whoops. Where am I at? Sorry. This right here, this road, you'll be able to come in off of Eagle Road, and this road will come around. Oh, that's used to, where am I at? I guess right here.
You could take that drive aisle heading north?
Yeah, that drive aisle that turns into Hobby Lobby, currently goes west. That's the main access for the apartments. But then you'll be able to use center point, probably eventually someday. It'll go to Wainwright and circle around us completely. But there's no access to the west that Mr. Doolin has going into the apartment complex.
So in lieu of having the northern access, the apartments would access on their southern portion heading east and then head north on the drive aisle to get to your?
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to really get in that proposed northerly access point either way.
Sonya, did we describe that correct? As the path that individuals to the west could get to this without accessing Eagle Road?
That is correct.
Steve, one other question. You mentioned the time of operation, it's, you know, 6:00 to, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. It sounds like maybe midnight. Is it your suggestion that 6:00 a.m. to midnight might be an acceptable hours of operation, realistically, in light of what you expect to be?
6:00 a.m.'s a little late. If you guys are out, we're all out earlier today. So we were open our other facilities at 5:00 a.m. and closing at midnight. The only thing, the different thing here is the highway and Eagle Road, the traffic it takes, that people now are working all kinds of hours, if it ever was needed. I just didn't want to have to come back and ask for an exception at that time. But we would vision this site being open from 5:00 a.m. to midnight to start. But then the car wash facility and the lube facility, it would be more hours like 8:00 to 8:00, 8:00 to 9:00 in the summer. Would never be open 24 hours, would that sound?
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any questions of the applicant?
Okay, thanks.
If anyone from the public has signed up to provide testimony?
No signups, Mr. President.
There are no signups. That speeds it along. Anyone here present tonight who wishes to provide testimony on this application? Go in once. Nobody?
Mr. President?
Ms. Milam.
I have a question for Sonya. On the landscape buffers, it's supposed to be 25 feet if it is against residential, and Mr. Eddy made it sound like it's going to be commercial next door. What, if it's commercial, what is the landscaper's buffer supposed to be?
Councilman Borton, Councilman Milam, if it's commercial, there is no buffer. There's just the regular five-foot perimeter landscape buffer. But residential uses or zoning requires a greater buffer width, 25 feet in CG District.
Sonya, is there any finding we have to make, or is it merely a choice to waive that requirement if we find it appropriate?
If you find it appropriate, just include that in your motion. Thank you.
Okay. Sonya, I'm going to ask you one more on the recommendation for the cross-access. It sounds like there was some pretty good explanation as to why this circumstance might not warrant what would otherwise be required. What was the staff's perspective on?
President Borton, Councilman, the applicant's response does address traffic from the south. They would not be required to go out onto the state highway to access the site. However, it does not address development to the north. Jasmine Lane is currently a private lane, so they won't be using that, and it doesn't touch this property anyway. But if, in fact, the property to the north does develop with non-residential uses, it would be a benefit to be able to access the site without them having to go out onto Eagle Road. That's the reason for the requirement.
Counsel, any other questions of staff at this point? Mr. Eddy, anything you want to provide in response? The final word is yours.
Again, Steve Eddy, 3775 North Eagle Road. The only thing I believe is if something happens to the north, I believe ITD, my gut, they will give that user access on Jasmine Lane to that. And I'm not sure what will happen with the proposed residential behind, if they'll get access to Jasmine, but I believe that ITD would allow an access there for use on Jasmine Lane.
Counsel, any additional questions, information from staff needed? If none, is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Not seeing any question from anybody on council asking additional questions. So I move that we close the public hearing on Item 9C, H-2018-0006.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on H-2018-0006. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just for discussion's sake, I'm, in the most part, very supportive of the application. Always appreciate the Eddy family and their investment in our community. I have wrestled a little bit with this access, cross-access issue. To Sonya's point, we likely create a hindrance for access from the north on a state highway. And I'm not quite sure the best way to mitigate that. I'm not sure where the rest of council is on that, and I'm fine to be the lone wolf on that particular piece.
I second that.
But to me, it's, I think that we need to find a good solution to allow the cross-access to occur if needed. I don't know if staff has other thoughts or other recommendations that we can address what is, I think, quite honestly, is a very valid concern by the applicant, is concerned about safety with pedestrian traffic coming from the apartment complex to the west, but still be able to provide that cross-access. I don't know if, in the discussion, if staff provided any other alternatives or solutions, if the applicant had any ideas, or if it was an either-or situation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
I'm very much in favor for this project. Again, I echo what Councilman Cavanagh said earlier about the Eddy family and their investment in our community. It's very much appreciated. They do great projects. Very much in favor with their recommendation to allow a smaller buffer. I'm okay with that. You know, I think that makes sense, especially if the parcel to the north ends up, you know, becoming commercial. The only thing I'm wrestling with, honestly, is to echo again what Councilman Cavanagh mentioned in regard to the access. We've seen too many times, unfortunately, when we've chose to limit access, and it creates more problems than it solves sometimes. And so I'm wrestling with that idea, because, you know, I agree with Steve's point in regard to safety. I think it's a valid point as well. So it's something that maybe we need to discuss a little bit further this evening. But I lean more toward allowing that access.
Mr. President? So first, I wasn't really thrilled about landscape buffers, but seeing has, as the, it's mostly commercial, the one residential parcel may become commercial. I'm okay with that. I like the application. My biggest issue is with the cross-access and seeing how there have been applications that come before us without access, and we're like, how did this ever happen? And who let it happen? And I just have this in my gut, like, I can't let that happen on my watch. There is, I think, maybe one other possibility, which would be letting him close the access, but with an easement for future access if needed. And that's the only other way that I can think of kind of getting both things in there.
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, Sonya, did I understand that right? That Jasmine is a private lane? So providing access to it wouldn't really provide access to the nearby tenants anyway? Because they shouldn't be using a private lane?
Councilman Little Roberts, Councilman. Jasmine is a private lane. This property, as I stated earlier, does not have frontage on that property. They wouldn't have right to it anyway with a private lane. The cross-access easement is basically what Councilman Milam already suggested, is that it would be an easement for future use, and the driveway would be constructed at this time. But right now, with the current use on the property, it wouldn't, nothing would connect to it. This would just be for future redevelopment of the property to the north. If it does go commercial, then that property, then, the larger piece, would touch the applicant's property. And at that time, we would require a cross-access easement, access easement from them to the Eddy parcel.
Thank you.
Sonya, to do that, it would necessitate eliminating the western portion of the parking spaces, and that would become the continued drive aisle, effectively?
Councilman Borton, no. It would, if you see my pointer here, it would be in this area right here. So you'd still have parking.
Just the safety concerns that were raised is with the drive-through exit being about the same location for southern traveling traffic?
Mr. President? What I would say is have the access easement, but not necessarily require the construction of the driveway at this time. And then if needed at a later date, because it may be way down the road, then whoever has the property to the north can put in the driveway and some good speed bumps for safety. I don't know. What do you think of that?
Council President, if I may respond to Councilman Milam's suggestion. You know, it's tough. If we don't get it right to begin with, it's really tough to make that happen. You suggested that it could, the financial burden could be on the property to the north. That's true. If it, it's an off-site improvement for them. It's something that we could require as a provision of their annexation. If we missed it, though, you know, it's, getting it constructed on somebody else's property is a problem too. If we had the applicant constructed at a later date, you know, there's no mechanism for that really either. So I'd caution you, if you're going to approve it that way, it does have some hurdles possibly down the road.
So it's, from the issues before us, it sounds like as to the property boundary buffer to the north, reducing it from 25 feet to 12 feet seems acceptable or sounds acceptable to the council. The remaining of, the remainder of the proposed changes, use of the existing property as a construction office, those all sounded to be acceptable to council. The one item of cross-access to the north is to be discussed, and then the hours of operation was one of the remaining issues to be addressed. The request is that, in lieu of 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., it go to 24 hours. Counsel, have any comment or position on the hours of operation? Mr. President. Requested. Mr. Burton.
I'm totally okay with the hours of operation. I mean, this is, you know, a state highway with- I mean, this is, you know, a state highway with the busiest, you know, state highway in probably all of Idaho. And so I'm completely okay if needs be in the future. If this project, you know, needs, you know, to be open later. I mean, totally okay with that if they need it. I'm okay with that.
Any concerns with that request? Okay. Sounds like that leaves the remaining outstanding issues to the cross-access request to the north, whether that's going to be required.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
With that, then, I feel confident in, I guess, my ability to make a motion that we approve item 9C H-2018-0006. Include all staff and applicant testimony. Being in agreement with the applicant's request to leave the off-site building to be used as a construction office, to be demolished before the CO is issued, that's 1.1A. Item B, 1.1C, for the property boundary adjustment. Item D, 1.13D, to reduce the landscape buffer from 25 feet to 12 feet with a berm and a four-foot-tall, fully-screen fence, as well as the modification to allow for 24-hour use of the facility. I think that's it.
Anything about the cross-access?
Nothing on the cross-access. As is.
Second. There is a motion and a second?
Sure.
Any discussion for council?
Mr. President, just for clarification, because there were some questions under everyone's breath specifically related to the cross-access. As I maintained earlier, I appreciate where the applicant's coming from on this, but I think that Councilmember Milam made, I think, a point that I had not considered, which is how many times we have been up here and have wrestled with why previous councils didn't approve across-access, and now we're trying to patchwork and fix and engage property owners. I just think it's appropriate to do it this way, as is, understanding maybe it may never come to fruition. But I also know that the applicant builds quality developments that I'm a fan of, and know that safety is always a concern of those facilities. And I feel confident that they'll continue to maintain a safe environment for their customers as well as their vendors.
Agreed. So it sounds like the motion includes the requirement for the cross-access to the north?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion by council? If none, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye. Everybody, item number 9D is a public hearing on a 2018 UDC text amendment by the city of Meridian. Caleb will be leading the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I am here to present some changes to the Unified Development Code, also known as Title 11 of Meridian City Code. These really are cleanup items, in our opinion. Typically, we would bring these to you in like a workshop setting, just to kind of get your feel and kind of let you know we're heading with some of these. But we really did feel like these were pretty minor changes. And I apologize that you're seeing these essentially for the first time, but you've seen some of these already in various forms. So let me just kind of get into that. The first change we're proposing has to do with daycare of the group variety. And so just let me quickly refresh your memory. We have three different types of daycare facilities. We have a family daycare, which is up to seven kids, then a group daycare, which is up to 12, and then a daycare center, which is more than 12. So this is that middle category of a group daycare. We are proposing to make that a conditionally allowed use within the R4 district. Some of the reason for that is in the most intense, the daycare center in the R4 zone now, we allow that with a conditional use permit, yet we don't allow a daycare center, a less intense one, with a conditional use permit in that district. So that didn't seem to make any sense, why we would allow with the CU 12 or more, but not 7 to 12. So that's the proposal there. So cleanup, yes. The other way you could potentially go is to remove daycare centers from R4. That would also make it consistent. So either way, but we feel like one of those two things need to happen. And we said, we've had some people that are interested in actually having daycares in R4, so let's go this direction with it as a conditionally allowed use. So that's the first change. The second change really is due to Supreme Court ruling from a few years ago, Reed versus Gilbert. Our sign ordinance right now gets pretty specific into the types of businesses that are allowed to have a portable sign in downtown. It gets as specific as restaurants and retailers. So if you're, for example, a business that does taxes, you're not eligible right now per our code to pull a portable sign permit. So this is a cleanup item, or will be neutral on the type of business that pulls this type of a sign permit. The third change has, again, to do with daycare facilities. And this is basically feedback from our fire marshal, as well as some of our customers. Sorry, let me advance the slide, see if, I should note. Bill put this together, both the text you see and the presentation this evening. I'm just presenting it to you. But through that feedback from our customers and the fire marshal, it made more sense in our process to get the background checks later on, rather than with, prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. We'd keep them moving through the process. Very rarely is that an issue. There's a stopgap there where if planning still issues a CCC, the fire marshal doesn't have to approve it, and they would stop there. So that one, again, is kind of a process cleanup. The next two kind of go together. So this is UDC 114327B3 and Table 115B. And I mentioned that you had already heard some of these. If you recall, Brighton had a project earlier this year, late last year, I should say, TM Creek Apartments. And they actually submitted for a code amendment, a UDC code amendment, to make it eligible for alternative compliance. And through that process, Mr. Nary's advisement decided to, we're more comfortable processing it this way. So you've already heard about the private usable open space requirements for apartments, and that project for Brighton got through. This allows that same process for others that might have circumstances that where 70 or 80% of private usable open space per unit doesn't make sense, because they've got a common courtyard that they all could share, or other reasons, just the context. Maybe it's an urban context, and they don't believe that they need to provide that private usable space per unit. The sixth change, that was four and five to those sections of code I mentioned, is to UDC 116C3B3. This has to align with the adopted codes you all did last year in Title 8 of City Code. So this makes it so our codes don't conflict in Title 11 and Title 8 with authority for street naming. So again, it's been some time, you may not recall that, but you changed that process with the Planning and Zoning Commission now playing a role. You still, it could be appealed to you in a lot of cases. But basically, this aligns Title 8, Chapter 2, Uniform Street Name and Addressing Number Code with the sections of the UDC. And those are the changes proposed. We did share this with the UDC focus group and the Building Contractors Association of Southwest Idaho. We did not hold any in-person meetings, because again, these are pretty minor. But we did offer that, hey, we're going to electronically share. If we hear from you, we can hold a meeting. We didn't get that feedback. We heard from two folks, Becky McKay and Cornell Larson, both commented on this. More clarifying questions, any real concerns with what was proposed? I have not received, we have not received any additional testimony since the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there wasn't anyone at P&amp;Z that testified either on this topic. So again, in summary, these are changes. Staff, we believe, are pretty administrative and minor in scope and make the UDC more understandable and forcible all the way around and implementation as well. So with that, Mr. President, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Caleb? Counsel, any questions on these? And Caleb, they, to your point, it would be more common to see it in a workshop and get some feedback, and then have the public hearing. But these seem to be relatively simple cleanups, as you've presented them, and very well could be acted on tonight. Might not be time-sensitive, but in light of their simplicity, we could act tonight if that's the council's desire. Counsel? Do you have anybody? No, anybody, nobody signed up, thank you. The room is almost empty. Anybody here in the public who wishes to provide any testimony on these amendments? None? Nobody? Nobody signed up? Counsel, any discussion on these?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
To your point, I think these are relatively cleanup issues. I guess, just one question for Caleb. Caleb, Ms. McKay's had a comment about one piece being somewhat vague. Do you have a response to her? Do we make any changes to any text after we receive that feedback that needs to be notated?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Councilman Cavanagh, if you could, I don't actually recall if I read her correspondence. Again, Bill's processed this. Could you refresh my memory on what her concern was?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Her comment was that Section 11-4-3-27B3, additional language for allowing for alternative compliance seems a little vague. Not what I would call a robust amount of feedback, but I just was curious. Recognizing that Bill's the one that put this together.
Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh, again, I do apologize. I'm not real familiar with that correspondence. Bill, I have to assume, did respond to her, though, and at least thanked her for that and provided some context for why it's written the way it is. I will let you know, we have a separate section that you don't see on here, because we're not proposing any changes to it, to the findings, if you will, that we look at when evaluating if alternative compliance is warranted or not. So that, maybe that's what she's referring to, and then look at that in that context. There are some circumstances we look at when approving or recommending denial of alternative compliance. So we haven't heard any follow-up from Ms. McKay either, so I have to assume she got, her concerns have been clarified since.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
If there's any other questions or comment, I move that we close the public hearing on 9D H-2018-0011.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on item 9D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve 9D, UDC text amendment H-2018-0011.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item 9D H-2018-0011. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye. Thank you. And Caleb, while we're on this topic somewhat, a couple of the items that have come up in council discussions, not for tonight to be discussed, but to put on the parking lot for future discussions, and maybe they're already in front of you, was an evaluation, a discussion, and perhaps a change of parking requirements in multifamily? You know, probably, these are already probably on your list, but there are things I've noted to make sure they are. The other one is a discussion and perhaps modification of the open space requirements for different zoning classifications. Maybe many others, but I know those two have come to light in some of the council discussions for perhaps the next roundabout of proposed amendments.
So, Mr. President, your meeting, if you want, we could read the ordinance, and I can give you an update under maybe future meeting topics, or now, if you'd like, on that a little bit, however you'd like to proceed. Because, yes, I have some updates that I could provide you just real quick, if you'd like. So, yeah. Parking standards, as you guys even talked a little bit tonight with Mr. Schultz's project there off of Franklin. We have been meeting on that, and not just on multifamily, also on commercial, and also for schools and other industrial parking standards. We're really looking at all of our parking standards at this point to see if they're still appropriate or not. We've had some recent issues with, just to call out of business, and it's not all their fault, I don't think, but where the curbs at there? The fire marshal's had some issues with some of the parking in fire lanes and just not having enough parking there, too. The Blue-Hair and Apartments here on Meridian Road is a multifamily project, also had some issues, Everest Lane up parallel to Chindon. So again, we're looking, and they all have different uses there, so we're looking kind of at our parking standards. So the plan is to come, I believe it's May 10th? Is that your workshop? I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I have a placeholder in Novus Agenda Manager right now to provide you those updates. We're still working through that with code enforcement and fire. We have done research with other municipalities in the Treasure Valley and even in the Northwest to see what they use for parking standards. So we'll share that with you, the table that shows this is what others do with bars and restaurants and multifamily. And so you can see all that, and we'll kind of informally propose some potential code amendments on parking. But yes, multifamily is in that list. Open space and amenities. We have talked about that at our planning staff meetings for the past, we didn't do this two weeks ago, because we've transitioned to parking now. But for the last month or six weeks or so, we've been talking about open space and amenities. Again, I don't want to pull the punchline just yet. But we do have some proposed changes to what may be eligible for open space that we think you may be interested in, just what we qualify as open space right now. We did look at essentially having, hierarchy is the only word that comes to mind, but a staggered, you know, R2, 10, you know, 5%, R4, 12, R8, 15, that type of thing. And that just didn't seem to really address the issue. We'll tell you more of the story, but we are looking at open space and amenities and have some thoughts on that that we'd like to share with you in a couple, three weeks.
Mr. President.
As well as fees. Sorry, I wanted to fit fees in there, too, so.
Okay. Mr. Burton.
This is awesome. This is good news to hear. I feel like sometimes, you know, we're sort of hamstrung to a certain degree, because a lot of times, you know, these developers with these applications, they meet those requirements, and so we're almost asking them for favors. You know, we're almost grovelling, can you please do this? Can you please do that? And then they're responding. And then it's, to their point, it's almost like, okay, we'll throw you a bone. We'll do it, but we don't really need to. So it's actually pretty cool that we're having this discussion. It's awesome. I'm glad we're doing it. Another thing, though, I think it's important to distinguish, and I'm sure you guys have already talked about this, but the difference between urban, you know, development versus suburban development. You know, I don't, I'm not necessarily concerned about the parking issues with like, for example, we had a recent development application, the Two and a Half Street Apartments. Like, I get why there's not as much parking in that location as opposed to something out in middle Meridian somewhere. I mean, it's completely two different animals. And so just something to know. I'm sure you guys have already talked about this, but it's a thought that I had.
Mr. President, I know there wasn't a question in there, but if I can, just piggyback on that comment. I also hope that, so, I don't know if you've noticed, but these code amendments don't move very rapidly. It takes us some time. We have a process. We get this UDC group together, and we talk about things. And we try to get everybody on the same page. But I do hope you've noticed over the past, since we had the joint meeting with P&amp;Z even, some of the multifamily projects that have come in, staff has been recommending more than the minimum. Tonight is a bad example, because that has had R4 zoning for 10 or 12 years, or whatever it is. But most of the projects you see have annexation and zoning requests. That's where you don't have to grovel. You can say, we want to see two per unit, period, if you want to annex into the city. And so we're sort of already implementing more than the bare minimum for code, that code requires for parking anyways. The open space and amenities, maybe not so much. But again, because it's, one, typically a conditional use permit, two, they're asking for the zoning they need. We really have a lot of, going back to some of that training with P&amp;Z, you have a lot of discretion in that. If you don't believe it's in the best interest of the city to approve that project and give them that zoning as requested, you don't have to. The findings, don't overthink the findings on those. If they're unwilling to provide the required, your level of required parking. But to that point, our staff is looking at the adjacent road, the public streets. Is there on-street overflow, on-street parking that can happen? If it's on Franklin, you can't park on Franklin, so that doesn't do you any good. But some of these projects are on other roads that have on-street parking available. Doesn't technically count? When all the spaces onsite are filled, you can park on the streets in downtown Meridian, for example, right? So the Two and a Half Street project, you can park on Two and a Half Street.
Yeah.
We don't technically count that, but realistically, it counts. So that's kind of some of the analysis, I hope.
Certainly, my comments were certainly not criticizing, just, just thoughts. We're good. Okay.
It may come up on the, the May 8th workshop as well, but your staff has, has spoken about open space requirements and, you know, developments adjacent to or near large city parks and public recreation areas might not necessitate as much, maybe some more flexibility in those requirements, depending on where they're located. So similar to the parking flexibility you've described. Stay tuned on May 8th for a good discussion, it sounds like.
Mr. President?
Ms. Mylum?
Caleb, so on, on May 8th, which it's not on the agenda yet, but is it, is it discussion or is it presentation? Do you want our feedback before then, or do you want to know what we want at that time? Or what we're looking for?
So, Councilman Cavanagh and I actually had, Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh and I had a similar conversation a couple, few weeks ago, in that I have a ci, city liaison, but I invite any of you to contact us at any time if you have any things you want to share or direction you want to give. I think it's more productive at this point in time, but we're not, we're not proposing to you any solid, you know, we don't have a solid proposal on the 8th. We have some thoughts that we think we want to get your feedback on the 8th, but if you have something now, you want to preempt some of those thoughts or make sure they're included in this, I'm, I'm happy that you can call or email me, or share them now, whatever you'd like to do. We're open, so however you'd like to proceed. But it's not going to be overly formal on the 8th. It's a workshop meeting. Again, we haven't shared this with BCA, or, you know, anyone in the development community. This is just us hearing your discussion with P&amp;Z and other hearings over the past year or so, and trying to respond to some of that. You can judge on the 8th how well we've done on that, and then we got to vet that through, again, the development community and, and see where it goes from there. But, again, if you have something you want to share now, I'm, I can take notes and we can further look at it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, well, Mr. President?
Ms. Mylum?
Caleb, I, I've, probably most of the things that I would like to share, I've already shared over the last few years. I think that our minimums are too low, both on open space and on amenities, particularly amenities with high-density housing. I think that at some point, it shouldn't be based on the acreage as much as the number of homes and the number of people that they have to serve. So those are comments that I have made in the past and, and kind of where I would like to see it go. We have, we're growing so fast, we're, everybody's complaining about the, the rate of growth. And so maybe a way to slow that down a little bit is to not be the minimum cheapest place to build the cheapest type of housing developments. And if we are going to get some stuff, it, it'll be a higher quality and, you know, better for our future. And if, if it's, if our qualifications are, you know, our minimums are too high for some, there's other places to go.
So, Mr. Borton, again, excuse me, Council President Borton, if I can, just, again, a little bit on, on more, and I alluded to it in the opening remarks, it's, and I don't have it in front of me, but, so I'm going off of memory of our last draft, we talked about a staff. The 10%, right now, we tend to get quite a bit of that qualified open space, the 10% being parallel to roads and buffers. We're proposing to remove that. So then your effective open space, that number doesn't go up from 10, but what counts to that 10 changes, right? So you're, now you're getting, if you were to count that, you'd be in the 14 to 15% range, say. So you could kind of, six is one way, half dozen the other, right? We could either say 15%, you can count the, the street buffers, or don't count the street buffers and provide 10, and you're still getting essentially that's, so, again, I'm oversimplifying that, but that's essentially how we're getting there to kind of step up that minimums. The amenities?
It's still quality open space, and that's
That's right.
That's what matters.
It's going to be
You see this development and it, there's nothing, there's really, we got 10.00001% open space. Well, we met your minimum, and you look at the plot, and there's like, there's really not a whole lot of green anything. So, yeah, I appreciate it. However you go about it, it's not the number to me, it's the, it's what the, and result that we're getting in the, in the development.
Right.
So, thank you.
Should be a good workshop. Thank you, Caleb. Item number 10A, ordinance number 18-1770. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Meridian, ordinance number 18-1770, Turf Farm subdivision, file H-2017-0149. An ordinance for annexation of parcels of land situated in a portion of the south half of the southwest quarter of Section 33 Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 35.35 acres of land from RUT to R8, medium-density residential, 16.560 acres, and R15, medium-high-density residential, 18.794 acres, zoning districts in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder in the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, CJ. We've heard this ordinance read by title. Does anyone wish to have it read in its entirety?
Mr. President?
Ms. Mylum?
I move that we approve ordinance, um, number 18-1770 with suspension of rules.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10A, ordinance number 18-1770. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President? Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 11, future meeting topics. We have, obviously, a workshop, some good stuff coming on the 8th. One of the items we discussed, I think it was last month, was the city council, council election process, and it sounds like it's going to be rolled out, made known to citizens, at least discussed somewhat in the town hall, I think on May 9th, with the idea of having a public hearing on the last Tuesday, May 22nd. And based on what we get there, we'll decide what next steps we want to take, if any, but May 22nd looks to be the date to have a public hearing. Get some comment on the council election process.
Thank you very much.
You bet. You were going to see, so by next week, I'm going to circulate some of the compiled agenda topics and some proposed months that events might occur to make sure we keep track of those. They'll include the biannual mayor strategic plan update, that'll happen every February and September going forward. It'll include the quarterly update we're going to get, even in simple dashboard form, from police, fire, and parks on level of service performance, past data, and we may follow up with discussions on that. We have, and we'll have a discussion on the Recreation District and opportunities of asset acquisition and, and what that could mean for the city, pros and cons. We'll have discussions on the nondiscrimination ordinance, which has been discussed and raised, will be presented. Right now, it's, it's slated for August, that month may change. There will be a discussion on a clean indoor air ordinance proposal. And we have, I think, in the May, we also have some follow-up coming back to us on the mechanics of a second post office in Meridian, what that entails and what those steps would be, if it's viable at all. I think that's May, I think it's May 8th as well. But the mayor's office has been getting some follow-up and specifics on how that's to occur. If it's possible at all, it might be literally an act of Congress, which may make it impossible, but nonetheless, at least we'll get the rules of the road of how that could be accomplished. There's some recent discussion that's been had on whether the city would ever venture into providing some improvements to, to non-city-owned property that might be owned by an HOA, and kind of out-parcel property that, maybe opportunities to clean up, talk about the policy considerations of whether we'd want to venture down that path and what that could mean financially, short-term and long-term. And, that's a long list, but those are some of the, the topics that have come up most frequently. Make sure we get a chance to address them. So, anything that I've missed that it's on the big list? And I'll circulate this out kind of with a month-by-month. I've talked about all these with the mayor to make sure that any of the ideas that we compile as a council get a chance to be discussed. So, anything I, I missed? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
You summarized, I think, a very heavy lift over the next few months, and appreciate you providing kind of a roadmap for us about where we're headed and where we're going, and it's very much appreciated to know that a lot of these items that many of us have brought up are being thought of and considered and scheduled for us to have the opportunity as a council to answer and address. So I appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you, and
Then
Glad to make sure it happens.
Want, just a side note
Yes.
For, for council, there's a very interesting article in The Statesman about growth in Meridian, and a very charming and charismatic council president is quoted in that article and is well worth taking the three and a half minutes to read it through. I think Councilmember Borton did a great job of summarizing how growth has impacted our community and did a great job of representing our community.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh. I appreciate it. To the topics I've described, we're going to try and, one, one a month would be a lot. So, the May is kind of taken up with the council election, so, and I know we've got some budget work in the summer, so we're going to sort of spread them throughout the next nine months. So, I'll circulate that around, they're not set in stone, but it'll keep it on everyone's radar. So, thank you for providing the input and ideas. Any other future meeting topics?
Mr. President?
Ms. Little Roberts?
If we could just take a moment, if anyone else has any information or questions, I've gotten several questions regarding the Gowan flights potentially over Meridian?
Mm-hmm.
If we have anything to weigh in on?
Ms. Little Roberts, I got an email similar to that, and I had sent it off to Robert